I'm going to go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum present of seven members. Mrs. Nolan is joining us by telephone. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board, members of the community. It's our pleasure to be here again this month, and we will begin this meeting as we traditionally do with pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and a moment of silence. And here, we've got a number of guests with us to lead us in those pledges, and they are from our bilingual summer school and our enrichment summer school. So I'd like to invite up Maria Sines and Melanie Marshall to introduce our students from both bilingual summer school and enrichment summer school. Come on up, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, we're going to share and do this together with a whole lot of children this year. We're going to let them introduce theirselves. Summer enrichment's a four-week program, and we're at the last week, and so we're happy to be here.
My name is Joanne.
My name is Dwayne.
My name is Avina.
My name is Robert.
My name is Asia.
My name's Elijah.
My name is Daniela.
My name is Hector.
Great, and we're going to all do this together. So if you'll please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. We're going to turn this way. Turn around, here's the flag. Okay? Ready? Put your hand on your heart. Ready? Okay, go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please join us in the Texas pledge.
Salute the flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation under God, indivisible.
Good job. Want to turn back around? You want to turn back around? Okay, turn around.
Remain standing for a moment of silence.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
Take a picture. Come stand right over here in front of us. That way, you can get your picture with us.
[laughing]
Harris, come on up.
Thank you all, boys and girls, we appreciate it. Mr. Harris, that is all of our recognitions.
As everyone is getting situated, I would like to recognize the artwork provided by our bilingual summer school and enrichment summer school students. It's on the back wall there, so if you get a chance, take a moment to look at the artwork. It's amazing how talented these students are. That takes us to our consent agenda, which is item E2, item G, H3, H4, J3 through J9. Does anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda items?
I'm going to go ahead and motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Takes us to board directions, reports, announcements. Anyone have any updates or reports?
DEIC met last week on Wednesday for their final meeting of the year. I thought it went exceptionally well. They ran back through our district improvement plan and noted kind of where we had come out and haven't come out over the course of the year, and I believe that there were still a number of, a couple of incomplete things, but most things have been accomplished, and it's a hard-working committee, and we thank them for their service, absolutely.
I just want to say a brief word about the graduation ceremonies, the three of them that we got to attend, and how much that means. I know it does to all of you as well as board members, to see the actual product of what it is the district does, and to see the smiles on these young people's faces and to hear about their plans, and how great it is to see that. And I couldn't be more proud of what the district does, and really, I think what we do is put those kids in a position to be successful, and then they take it and run with it. So I just wanted to point that out, how much I enjoyed that. Mrs. Nolan, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, we can't see you shaking your head.
I'll say, I'll say ditto. I love the graduations, and I don't think I cried. No, I did cry this year. I did. They moved me.
That's fair. Okay, well, that takes us to superintendent report. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. It says upcoming events, and when you get to this part of June, you don't have a lot of upcoming events other than hopefully a little bit of vacation. I'll talk about some recent events, and that has to do with the passage of House Bill 3. We spent a tremendous amount of time at our workshop session at 5:00, talking about the implications of House Bill 3 on our 2019-2020 budget. While we don't have final adoption of that budget slated for this evening, we will come back and do that and set a tax rate in August. We do have a significant, we are ready to move forward later on in the meeting with a significant component of that, and that would be compensation increases for, and a compensation plan for College Station ISD employees. So I guess I'd just like to say I commend the governor, the lieutenant governor, and speaker of the House for their leadership, the chairs of the Senate Education Committee and the House Public Education Committee, Senator Taylor and Representative Huberty, both on their leadership to get this to occur. House Bill 3 is not perfect, but it marks a significant step forward in taking care of Texas schoolchildren now and into the future, and at the same time, providing some meaningful tax, property tax reduction for property owners across the state of Texas. So they, the 181 members of the House and Senate delivered on their promise to the Texas voters when they came to town, to Austin in January, and they delivered on that. As I said, it's not perfect. We will have to be mindful that the money that was infused in the system is made permanent, so after this next two-year period, it will be able to provide long-lasting support for Texas public schoolchildren. But I do want to say that that was a tremendous step forward for our state. Every district was treated differently. They weren't treated the same. Every district in the state at least benefited 3%, an increase in revenue in 3%. Some improved their financial picture much more than that. College Station ISD was not one of those 3% districts, but we were somewhere in the low-to-mid range as to how we benefited from that. Right now, in our best estimates, is about an additional $5.2 million coming into, or in, as is the case in College Station ISD, prevented from leaving our school district in the tune of a much lower recapture payment. We will see tax rate compression. We will see our tax rate be lowered about 7 cents by the state and about an additional 5% by the board, maybe more, when it all shakes out by the end of this summer. And so we will see some, less revenue, but we'll see less going out the door to recapture back to the state of Texas. And so anytime local taxpayer dollars can stay in this school district and benefit the schoolkids, College Station ISD, that's a positive thing for us and for our students. So I'm very excited about that, excited later on in this meeting to be able to bring a significant, a recommendation for significant investment in the teachers, counselors, nurses, librarians, school bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, central office employees, people all across College Station ISD. And so I look forward to talking about that later in the evening. So, but with that, what we've got on the horizon in the next month or so is hopefully taking some time off with our, with our folks, being able to spend time with family and friends, and resting and recharging, and looking forward to a great 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Harris, that's my report.
Great, thank you very much. That takes us to hearing of citizens. Are there any cards?
Not yet.
Okay, that takes us to H1. Receive report related to CSISD's leadership profile. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We've been, when I say we, the administrative team, success team in College Station ISD over the past year and a half, have been working diligently to identify who we are, what we want to be about as a leadership team, what we want to be about, and what we want to embody as educators, teachers in the classroom, and what we want our students to know, do, and be able to embody as they graduate from College Station ISD. We call those our leadership profile, our educator profile, and our learner profile, respectively. We've given a couple presentations in the past couple months about the work that's gone into the development of the learner profile and the educator profile. Tonight, I've asked Dr. Trammell, our chief academic officer, to come, share where we are in the development of our leadership profile, and what we aspire to do as leaders in College Station ISD, and those who come and join us, what we hope that they, and plan for them to embody as they join us in leading our schools and schoolkids in College Station ISD. So with that, I'd like to throw it over to Dr. Trammell. Dr. T?
Good evening. Thank you for receiving this report. We are...
Is my turn?
Helpful. There I am. Yes, thank you. It's great to be here to give you just a report on our leadership profile. Would like to just remind the board that we stemmed all of our profiles from a common vision based on our board's commitments and beliefs to our community, our success team's beliefs, and our educators' beliefs. From that, we crafted our vision statement, which addresses the whole child and authentic learning experiences and preparing them for their role in life as they go forth from our district. We, as Dr. Ely so articulately put it, have created the learner profile and the educator profile, so just a reminder of what those two documents stand for and how they kind of help guide our work with the learner profile defining what we want our children to leave our district with. And then the educator profile, of course, defining the type of educator that we want to see interacting with our kids, and the behaviors and attributes that we look for in the hiring process and in developing our educators. And with that, the leadership profile will designate the attributes and behaviors that a leader within our district should exhibit as they interact with the stakeholders throughout our schools, our district, and our community. And I like to say that we did capture strong educator voice in this document. Success team created this document, but then educators also came and were a layer in that entire process. So it was interesting to see what we created and then what they prioritized as their priorities in a leader, to lead them as they work with the children in the classrooms throughout our district. Our leadership profile was developed pretty much along the same lines as our educator profile and our learner profile through just accumulative beliefs with affinity mapping. Our categories came from that, and then we worked on our defining statements based on input. We came up with four categories for our leadership profile. Communicates and collaborates effectively is the first one. Exhibits the highest standards of character and professionalism. Builds capacity in themselves and in others around them, and demonstrates critical thinking and innovative problem solving. In looking at the first category, communicates and collaborates effectively, that was fleshed out as we want leaders that listen compassionately, to support others, that speak and write with clarity and purpose, that assumes shared responsibility and collaborative work, and works as both a leader and a contributor. In looking at the second category, with exhibiting the highest standard of character and professionalism, we want our administrators and leaders throughout the district to act with honesty and integrity, to demonstrate equitable and ethical decision-making, to foster a student-centered climate of safety, trust, and respect, and people who see leadership as an opportunity to serve others, because we are in the business of serving children and our community, and educating future generations. In looking at the building capacity in others and self, we would like for our leaders to be able to establish a culture of accountability and high expectations, to be people who inspire and motivate others that they work with throughout the district and even our parent group, to help support educating our students, to identify and leverage strengths all around them, their own strengths and the strengths of others, to model intellectual curiosity and learning. Just because someone, you know, is not in the classroom doesn't mean that they are not a lifelong learner. We learn throughout our entire lives, and we want to exhibit that passion and motivation for learning and model that for our teachers, because we certainly want them to continue to be learners, and we need to model the way in that. Then support risk-taking and innovation. Exhibit the importance of visibility and modeling. And then to be motivated intrinsically. These are some of the same, we want to build these characteristics in our students as well. We build future leaders, and so this is very important that we model these things from the top down. And so we model this, and we want our teachers to model this, and we want to instill this in our children as they go forth and be, to be leaders in society. So the last category is demonstrating critical thinking and innovative problem solving. This includes adapting easily to situations and change, exhibiting perseverance and resilience in challenges, demonstrating a growth mindset, exhibiting knowledge and competence in all areas of responsibility, demonstrating decisiveness, timely decision-making, and utilizing a system approach. And we understand that systems look different for different people, and that's totally okay, but we want our leaders to have the ability to see systems, implement systems for efficiency and effectiveness in running our schools and in running departments across our district, so that we can maximize our budgets and our personnel units and all that we do on behalf of the taxpayers. So in ways, in looking at ways that this can help us throughout our practice in the district, certainly in the hiring process, we've had the opportunity to use this leadership profile. When we get down to the top two candidates, we go through this leadership profile, and we have literally taken the candidates and calibrated them against these attributes. So the people we are now bringing before you are people that have been calibrated against this instrument. Instructional leadership, people who meet the criteria on this leadership profile are people who can supervise instruction effectively and follow through with curriculum implementation. They can build the right climates and cultures on our campuses. They are risk-takers. They remain positive through adversity. They are, you know, they demonstrate grit, they persevere, they are passionate about their craft, and they are motivated intrinsically. They practice successful implementation of strategic initiatives. They are very capable of looking at what, what do we want our learners to graduate our system with, and helping us accomplish those strategic initiatives. They are, we anticipate that and know that this will be a professional development tool that will help us grow ourselves throughout the district as leaders. We had the opportunity at Sally, our leadership conference this summer, to each take the leadership profile and reflect on ourselves. We didn't have this document when most of us were hired, so it was very insightful to take a moment to go through this document and these four categories and reflect on our own abilities, and think about where we might want to grow as leaders. So we foresee this guiding our professional development as well. We think this document will help us in our community-based accountability system and finding the right leadership, and helping us get what we need to get done for our kids in CSISD, helping us accomplish our district and campus improvement plans, you know, certainly prioritizing our budgets and for recruiting and training, to give us specific areas that we might want to grow, actualizing the learner and educator profiles, and then, because the people that meet this leadership profile are the people that can build capacity in others as well as themselves. And then obviously, we foresee this helping us to accomplish our vision for the district and your vision as well. So with that, we are excited to have completed our third and final profile, and thank you for, you know, listening to this report tonight, and do you have any questions?
Great, thank you very much for that. Any questions, comments?
Perfect. Thank you.
I, I really have enjoyed watching the progression as you've kind of built it up through the various stages, and watching how each layer seems to build on and add to the one before. So I, I'm excited to see it play out. I'm kind of wondering how many of each of you were wondering how we measure up against the leadership profile list? I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just curious.
We can give you the self-assessment as well, if you would like, Mr. Harris.
No, we're good. That can be, maybe next month.
Well, you are welcome. I have the, the questions that, where we took the leadership profile and flipped it for reflective purposes, so any of you are welcome, but you can easily take the attributes and have a moment to think on that.
Maybe you could send that out to us.
Thank you.
If it pleases the board. Sure that it would, but it might. Okay, let's go to H2. Receive report related to College View High School. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Principal of College View High School, Justin Grimes, to come up here and give us an update on College View High School, our first-choice high school. As he's making his way to the front, I'd just like to take a little bit of time and provide some history as to how College View came to be. As most, everybody on the board is aware, and most people in the room are as well, we operated an alternative high school for a number of years known as Timber Academy. Timber Academy was located ironically, not ironically, on Timber Street. It was a repurposed facility that could only hold between 45 and 50 kids at a time. The program there was a true dropout recovery program where students who were overage and undercredited came to the facility. They went through, at first, through packets of information, and then later online to accumulate credits and graduate. As kids would accumulate enough credits for graduation, a spot would open up, and other kids could come into the school and go through that same process of earning enough credits to graduate. We would graduate a number of kids three times a year. What we, what we found as we got into the early teens was that, one, the facility could no longer hold the amount of kids that we needed to have a different type of experience from our comprehensive high schools, and so we needed some additional space. And two, we had a different vision for our kids, more than just interacting with a computer screen to amass credits and graduate. We, we believed we could do more for those kids. We didn't know what that more was going to be, but we had a vision of something different, something that would be more impactful for the students' whole, whole experience in College Station ISD. So the principal at that time, Dr. Margie Martinez, approached superintendent at that time, Dr. Coulson, and the Planning for Growth Committee that was going through determining what project should be on the 2013 bond election. That 2013, we built our ninth elementary at that time, Spring Creek. We'll have some action on Spring Creek here in a little bit. But another one of those projects was acquiring some additional land, building, which was, which was the College Station Conference Center, raising both of that building and Timber Academy, and building a facility that could meet the needs of kids in a different manner, meet more kids' needs. This was not designed to be a way to manage our enrollment growth. This was, College View, as it's now known, and was known at that time as the Center for Alternative Learning, was only designed to hold at most 200 kids. So this was not designed to be a way to take kids who would be overcrowded at a high school and give them another option. This was, this was a way to find a facility to meet kids' needs in a different way, kids who are at our comprehensive high schools who needed something different, needed smaller atmosphere, needed more of a family atmosphere. Many of the things that college, that Timber Academy was able to provide, quite frankly, but, but not to the degree that we wanted to. So we went to the voters in 2013. They saw their way clear to, to give us the authority to build a facility. And then we had to go about the process of determining what type of educational program would be inside those four walls. And myself and some other district administrators, Dr. Martinez and campus staff at Timber Academy at that time, went through a process to determine what would meet the needs of College Station ISD kids. We looked at different types of, of models out there. We looked at early college high school, and you, many of you have heard me say this before, Bryan Collegiate, just across town in Bryan, is a early college high school. You can earn 60 credits or more of college credit and graduate with an associate's and a high school diploma at that time. In a town that has only 30,000 public school students, probably Bryan Collegiate has that, has that market covered, really. We looked at New Tech high schools, we looked at STEM schools, we looked at other places. We visited Northwest ISD, and Georgetown ISD, and Clear Creek ISD, and so I looked at some different models, and came, the district and campus group came together, and it came up with a model we thought would work and meet the needs of kids in College Station. And this is our first choice school, and we're very excited about it. When I say choice, you can choose to go there irrespective of what attendance boundary you live in, just as long as you live in College Station ISD. It's not choice open at this point to anybody outside of the school district. Dr. Martinez and her staff did a great job of getting that school started. We had a real opportunity this last year to welcome back Justin Grimes to ascend to be the leader of College, of College View High School, and he's done a great job with that as well. And after Justin's first year and some of the changes that he's been able to provide for us, I want to give him the opportunity to spend some time with you and talk about some of the successes that we've done, some of the changes, a lot of the firsts that have happened this year, which are really exciting. So I'm sorry I gave a little bit long of a prelude to this, but I wanted to talk about where this, this history and this, this really special opportunity that we have with College View has brought us to where we are today, and Justin's going to give us a little bit of a light as to where we can be in the future. So with that, please welcome Justin Grimes, Principal of College View High School. So with that, please welcome Justin Grimes, Principal of College View High School. Justin.
Did he give you enough time to get ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you, Dr. Ely, members of the board. Ms. Nolan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very, very good. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about College View, our kids, our staff, our brand. Anytime I get that opportunity, I appreciate it. So thank you all for this time tonight. I would like to talk to you exactly what Dr. Ely said and tell you about the great things that are happening at College View and we intend to continue to happen as we move forward in the future. So without further ado, I'd like to talk to you about College View High School, home of the Wolfpack family. And remember that theme as we go through the presentation tonight because we absolutely are a family. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the description of who we are. You heard Dr. Ely mention we're the CSISD school of choice. What exactly does that mean? And more importantly, how does that look for our kids and our families that are choosing our family to go to school? Talk about our staff and the amazing things that they do. Performance data, look at some numbers this year. And then major goals and activities and then challenges and needs that we currently have that I see. So scope of choices, we talk about we're a school of choice. So what does that mean? How does that look? Well, right now, we currently offer our students four of the five endorsement pathways, including business and industry, arts and humanities, multidisciplinary studies, and public services. So as you can see from that graphic there from House Bill 5, there's five total endorsement pathways. We currently are able to offer four of those five. And I'll kind of prelude, talking about our staff, that requires a tremendous amount of flexibility and effort on the part of our staff in order to make that happen, to offer those coherent sequence of courses. So I'm really, really proud, bless you. I'm very, very proud of that. We currently offer 69 dual-credit hours, and so I've divided that out for you as to what that looks like. We currently offer students the ability to complete up to 48 hours of dual-credit courses. Let me back up just a minute. Forty-eight hours of ACM, which is academic courses, okay? And that's through BLEN. And so we're talking about English, math, psychology, government. Those are the 48-hour type classes that we have available at College View. And then we also have 21 hours of transferable credits that we are now offering with our fire science program, and those are WECOM credits. What does WECOM mean? Workforce endorsement, or excuse me, workforce education courses. So 48 hours of academic courses, 21 hours of transferable WECOM courses, if you will. So we're really, really proud of that. And then we have four specialized programs that exist at College View. Fire science, which is in our very first year. Obviously, I'm going to talk more about that later. Art, animation, and then choir was in its first year this year as well. One of those firsts that I'll be referring to. Continuing with our choices, choices that kids have, that families have if they come to College View High School. So we just completed our first year of the TEACs, Fire Science Academy, and our cadets did an amazing job. You see Chief Almanza there in the picture. We also have, that's Chief Charles Almanza. We have Chief JP Moore. Those are our two main TEACs instructors that physically come to our campus to provide the instruction. And then, of course, all of this is led by Chief Harvey Cheshire, who does an amazing job working with us. Bless you. And so really proud of the TEACs Fire Science Academy. So all of these cadets that you see in the picture completed year one, which is, so the first two years is basically one whole course that's divided into an A and a B. Year three moves into hazmat, and then year four moves into the emergency management services. And so students go through all four years of the program with us. They get all of the didactic portion of the fire science course with us. And then because they are not 18, when they finish our program in four years, they have a one-month program that they go out to Brayton and complete. And then when they pass their state exam, they are full-fledged firemen and women and all of the credentials that go with that. So we are very proud of this program. As we move into year two next year, very excited about some of the possibilities that we have. Chief Cheshire and I and Chief Almanza met recently, and he's in the works right now of possibly getting a partnership with a organization to possibly bring some virtual reality courses to our kids as part of the coursework, both in fire science but also fire structure. Those would be two kind of different, unique offerings that we could possibly, hopefully, offer to our kids. So we're really excited about our Fire Science Academy, very proud of that. We have two unique courses, including horticulture and forensic science. And to my knowledge, it's unique just to College View. You can see some pictures of our kids involved in both of those courses. We have a greenhouse located on our facility, and our students grow everything from peppers to flowers to herbs, and they do the coursework that goes with that, learning about pollinization, learning about cross-pollinization. And Ms. Stip does a phenomenal job with that course. Our kids love it. And then you see a picture of our forensic science. We actually just offered that for the first time this year, and those kids got to experience some amazing guest speakers that we brought in, both Brazos County Sheriff's Office. We brought in Sheriff Kirk. We brought in some members from Sam Houston State University. We also did some field trips, which we like to do a lot at College View. And we went to the actual Houston Forensic Science Lab, and there was a case that had made pretty public news at the time that our kids went to on this field trip. And the actual evidence from that case was in the crime lab, and our kids kind of got, well, they got to see it, which was really cool for them, how that whole process works. And so we're a growing class, very popular class. And so those are two unique courses that we have to College View that we're also proud of. Very busy slide, lots of things happening here, but these are things that I wanted to highlight that are unique just to College View. And again, when you're a family and you're small, you have the ability to connect and personalize and customize to levels that it's hard to do at larger campuses. So one of the things that we try to do is create a college-like atmosphere. Now, if you ask our kids, what is a college-like atmosphere? That means, oh, I get to do what I want to do, go where I want to go? No, that's not a college-like atmosphere. College-like atmosphere, you get privileges that you earn. So one of the primary things that we do is we have what's called the PAC card. So students can earn their PAC card every three weeks, so basically every reporting cycle, progress report, report card, and then that repeats all the way throughout the year. And they can either gain or lose their PAC card. And it's based on academics, attendance, and behavior. And if you gain your PAC card, then you get special privileges that go with that. And several of those are listed on the slide here, one of which is the Student Kitchen. We have a full-service kitchen that is accessible to our students with the PAC card. It's got stoves, microwaves, Keurig's, refrigerators that stocked full of items that we can provide as incentives that kids really like. And so it's a special privilege that kids really are attracted to, and it's something that we are proud to have, Student Kitchen. We also do special trips with our PAC card and lunches for our PAC card holders. And then, and we have the PAC lounge. So the PAC lounge is a special spot in our building that has some college-like freedoms. You know, we've got instruments in there. We've got some other student-choice devices that they really like, and it's a great incentive for them. Again, if they earn it, then you absolutely get that privilege to go into the PAC lounge, and that's a big deal for our kids to get to go in the PAC lounge. We're very intentional with, we have a 55-minute time period every day that we call PAC time, and we're very intentional with that time. And so every single student in our building, on Mondays, we do what's called Grade Check Monday. And so they're sitting in their PAC time, class teacher, and we have a grade report sheet that's universal. Every student fills it out, and then more importantly, they email it to their parent or guardian that day. And so the kids own where they are every Monday, grade-wise, and then parents also get, not only to hear from us as a teacher or administrator, but they hear from their child. Hey, I see you're struggling here in geometry, let's get it picked up. On Tuesday during PAC time, we have Targeted Tutorial Tuesday. So basically, what happened on Monday, what that report looks like drives what Tuesday looks like. So you may have an additional study hall if everything looked good on Grade Check Monday, or you may be going to get some additional support. And teachers always have the autonomy to pull students as needed. Then Wednesday is something very unique, we call Workshop Wednesdays. And that time is where we bring every student into our auditorium, which we call the den, and we bring in guest speakers. And there's usually a presentation geared around the specialty of that guest speaker. Just to give you some examples, we've brought in, in the picture here, you see Chief Stewart from the Brazos County Sheriff's Office, and he was visiting with us about his time, which I learned something new, that he was an advisor to President Bush, '41. He was on his special advisory cabinet because of his experience with military intelligence. And he guided a lot of the intelligence decisions through the time period where we were at war during President Bush's presidency. We brought in Vista College. They did a financial literacy course with our kids. We brought in BLEN Dental Hygienist School. We have brought, I mean, so you can see it ranges from college career, and then sometimes it's me talking to our kids. And we use this time where we implemented the digital citizenship curriculum this year at our campus, utilizing the Common Sense Media that we have district-wide. And then we also had another program just talking about character and how to deal with adversity. So that time is very intentional. And then sometimes we just do family stuff. So like, for example, on Thanksgiving, we do our Thanksgiving meal during Workshop Wednesday. On Thursday, as you are likely aware, we do not have extracurriculars. So how can we, again, provide those choices and opportunities for families that are coming to College View? So every Thursday, we have Club Day during that 55-minute time. Every single one of our staff members leads a club, and our clubs are driven by student choice. I have a student advisory cabinet, and they advise and give me, I seek input from them. What kind of clubs would you like to see? And so we have a set of clubs that exists for the fall, and then we change them. And we have another set of clubs that exists for the spring. So if a kid, you know, feels like they're caught in a rut, they have a chance to change to something new in the spring. So there's constant choice in that. And we have everything from iPhone photo, which kind of leads into our yearbook, to karaoke, which plays into our choir. So we try to, you know, tailor that to the different programs that we have. But again, it's based on student choice, and our Club Day Thursday is time that students really look forward to. And then Flex Friday. Flex Friday, again, we don't have extracurriculars, but we do have intramurals. And we do a different intramural every six weeks, and students, it's amazing, you know, when you see kids in a different light and a different frame and those competitive juices come out, and you're like, I didn't know that kid had it in them. Or that teacher, for that matter. So Flex Friday is where we do our intramurals. And then just some unique things, we do cross-curricular field trips. You see a picture of our horticulture class mixed with our art class, and they took a trip to the, excuse me, the Rose Emporium in Brenham. And on the same day, we came back and went to the new Aggie Gardens. And so what both of those classes were working on simultaneously, the horticulture kids were looking at pollinization, germination, while our art students were actually drawing the roses and, you know, different perspectives of how to draw it, shadowing, things like that. So they worked together, and we try to do that as often time as we can. We had a first-time-ever senior family luncheon this year. You see a picture of that. We brought every single one of our seniors and up to two guests, and we sat down in our gym and had a family lunch. And we recognized all of our seniors. This is where we did our special awards and really just the whole luncheon was devoted to recognizing and giving our seniors and their families that time. You know, I told them that day, you know, the next couple of days is going to go by in a blur. Take this moment to stop and pause and just enjoy time with your family and say thank you. And yes, if your mama or grandmama wants to take a picture, take the picture. I'm still haunted by pictures in my mama's house today because I gave that half grin, half smile because I didn't want to take that picture, and I have to look at it every day. So those are just some things that are unique to us that I'm really proud of. A family movie night, we did that brand-new this year. We had one in the fall, one in the spring, and we brought our kids in. We have brought them in the den because it's kind of a natural stadium seating, and we showed a Halloween movie, and we showed a spring movie. And all of our kids came, and our PTO was a part of that. It was a really, really good evening for us on those evenings. Talk about our staff. Right now, we currently have 11 committed teachers who serve almost 100 students. In order to do that, we have to get creative with our scheduling. So one thing that we have that's also unique is we have an 85-minute block schedule. So every Monday, Wednesday, we go to half of our eight periods. Every Tuesday, Thursday, we go to the other half in their 85-minute class periods, of course with that 55-minute built-in every day. And then on Fridays, looks more like a traditional 40-minute, go all eight periods a day. But the thing that we find with our 85-minute block is, you know, teachers can give that 20, you know, 25-minute lecture, and then we can utilize the rest of the period to get into the application, break into small groups, go into the lab. Kids can interact and get into, like I said, the small group collaborations, and that's very, very beneficial. Our teachers really enjoy that, our students enjoy that. But again, our teachers have the burden of, on, you know, one day, or excuse me, our A days, they may have a conference period, whereas on a B day, they may not. Now, we're still giving them the minutes that are required, but nonetheless, that still can be, you know, if you know on this day, I'm not going to get that time to, you know, just gather myself. And so our teachers are asked to be very much a part of that creative scheduling that we have. Of course, we have to have stacked classes. Right now, currently, our master schedule, moving into next year, we're looking at 13 sections of stacked classes. What I mean when I say by that, we may have a Level 2 and a Level 3 class occurring at the same time, and our teachers have to modify their instruction based on that and have to plan intentionally for that. Multiple certifications, so I can boast that 10 of 11 of our current teachers carry multiple certifications. And what I mean when I say that is they don't necessarily have the same subject 4 through 8 and then 8 through 12, meaning they have multiple certifications. They may have an English Language Arts certification, and they have a History certification. 10 of our 11 of our staff members currently carry multiple certifications, which allow us to be creative in that master schedule, but also open up the course offerings throughout the day, whereas it's very difficult to do when you only have 11 teachers. And our teachers, again, are committed to that, and we've had several just this year that have gained additional certifications because they see the value in that. 100% of our teachers sponsor a club, which I mentioned earlier, and then over half sponsor a program. So when I say program, meaning art, choir, yearbook, National Honor Society, Student Council, over half of our teachers also sponsor a program on top of a club, on top of preparing multiple preps for their certi-, I mean, excuse me, for their subject area. Let's look at some performance data. So our ADA for the year, we ran 95% student attendance, which, you know, to me, when you look at attendance, it speaks to your campus culture and climate. If kids want to be there, it says a lot about what's happening and how connected they feel. And then on the opposite of that, we also received the highest secondary campus for staff attendance for the month of January in CSISD, and we ran very high staff attendance all year long. It's not just January. But I wanted to make sure I recognize our staff for that effort. January is a tough month. You know, you come back and a lot of sickness starts kicking in, the flu kicks in. And so again, our kids and our staff data shows that they want to be there, and they're committed to being there. Our STAR, and this is very preliminary information, but this is just Domain 1, student performance. And I wanted to denote, this is just first administration. So students that took these tests as first-time takers. Algebra 1, we were at 86%. English 1, we were at 91%. English 2, 92. Biology, 100. And US History, 100. Again, preliminary data, but something that we absolutely praised right at the end of the year with our staff, very proud of that, very proud of our kids for the effort that went into those results. And then we just finished up, 60 dual-credit courses were completed by 25 students, and right now, we have expanded both the number of courses that students are signed up for as well as the number of students. So we're, I think it's 73. If all of those are completed next year, that number will go up to 73 in terms of courses completed by our students. To me, there's, I'm going to go back to that slide. I want to make sure I'm very clear that what we are about is far more than looking at how well we did on a STAR EOC administration. Is that very important? Is that very important? Absolutely. But I also am very, I want to know how our kids are performing in fine arts, and how are they performing in leadership roles, and how are they performing in other areas of the building? And so the rest of the slides talks about our performance data in those areas that I just referred to. So in our first year ever in competing in Skills USA, we had six students that qualified for state. Three of them had superior ratings in animation technology rendering. One had an excellent rating. One had a silver medal for 3D visualization and animation. And one had a bronze medal for 3D visualization and animation. As you know, Skills USA is a very, very popular and productive opportunity in CSISD. Our other comprehensive high schools always perform very well. So I was very, very proud of our sponsors and our kids for the performance that we had in our very first year. They did some amazing work. You can see their samples that went to state. They had to basically take something from scratch and render it into those 3D animation still shots. And they did some amazing work. And I watched the process occur throughout the year, and I still, I can't do justice as to how talented kids are when they can produce results like that and where they started from. Unbelievable. And just so you know, the software that they're using to render those is called Maya. It's the same software that they're using at the big school across the street, Texas A&amp;M University and the VIS Labs. And our kids are already utilizing that software. Our art program is obviously something that is a big program, a big draw for us, and we're very proud of that. And it's easy to talk about performance data here. 23 of our students, as you can see pictured there, were recipients at the Tammu Vet School Art Show, which according to our art teacher, Ms. Rife, is very, very, I don't want to say unheard of, but it's very, very competitive to have that many kids receive awards. And then we had the most of any campus student holiday cards selected this year across the district. And so we're very proud of the level of work that goes into that program and what our students are able to produce and continue to produce even beyond when they leave us. A year of many firsts, we had a lot of firsts this year. Student Advisory Cabinet, that's not something new, but it's new for us. And so I met with my student advisory cabinet every month. And again, that was an opportunity for me to connect to them, but more importantly, give me an opportunity to hear the pulse from their perspective. You know, I think many times we as adults can get, or at least myself as an adult, can get caught up in how do I see things? And we forget to, our customers, the kids, how do y'all see things? And so that student advisory cabinet was very productive for us. I got a lot of good valuable information from that, plus I got to connect to our kids. First-year UIO Choir Program, I talked about Skills USA. First-year Campus PTO, we had a very active PTO and continuing to grow. First-year Citywide PTO. Had our first-ever prom at the Phillips Event Center. I think I ran into a few of you that night. Our first-ever award ceremony for grades nine through 12. We had over half of our kids recognized at our award ceremony. They all received a medal and a certificate. And just to see those kids that, just to be real honest, may not have had an opportunity when they're mixed in with 1,800 other students, to be recognized by our staff on multiple different fronts. And just to see them and their families share that moment of recognition was really cool. And so really excited about that night, and obviously excited for years to come. We had our first Education Foundation Scholarship recipients, we had two. And then we had our first-ever CSISD Hall of Fame honorees, and we had three. First-ever Senior Week, first-ever Senior Pranks, first, I was a part of every one of them. I told them, guys, I said, if you go through, I said, I'll even help you, but it goes through me. If I vet it, you're good. If it doesn't go through me, I can't help you. But they did a great job, and we had a really fun time. I blew up, I think, 500-something balloons we put in our stairwell and Saran wrapped it. So the stairwell was full of balloons. That was, and then we had a barbecue beach day the next day. So they really had a great time. We had a couple of trips we took with them. And then I've already talked about our senior luncheon. And then this year, and almost all of you attended, and I appreciate that, our graduation ceremony, we had our first year of pure CVHS graduating class. In other words, we did not have any of the old, I shouldn't say old, excuse me, the previous Timber Model students mixed in. We were purely College View High School graduates this year. Our goals and activities moving forward. First and foremost, we're going to continue to be the home of the Wolf Pack. That is the one thing that, as I visit with families who are incoming, and our current families and staff that we serve, and the survey data that I got at the end of the year, that is a very predominant theme that I have received from all of our constituents, that they are very grateful and appreciative of the family atmosphere that we have created and continue to nurture at College View High School. You see the graphic there, it says graduate profile at College View High School. So that's basically our CSISD learner profile. And that's something that I'm going to be rolling out this year with our kids, is the actualization of that learner profile. You know, as adults, we know the learner profile, we can articulate it, we know what it means. But if our kids don't know it, then they can't actualize it. And so I'm going to be very intentional with talking to our kids and using this language and making sure our teachers are providing these opportunities, because we believe in, again, educating the whole child. We want to make sure that we are preparing you for a socially engaged citizen. We want to make sure we're preparing you to deal with adversity. And so taking that learner profile, being intentional with putting it in front of our kids so that they can speak about it, but more importantly, they can own it. Kids will meet expectations if they know what they are and they're clearly communicated. So we're going to be intentional with, moving forward, communicating our graduate profile at College View High School. Exploring partnerships for progressive opportunities with college and workforce-ready graduates. I have met and will continue to meet with several local entities, both at the post-secondary level, but also the local businesses in trying to explore possibilities of creating college and workforce-ready opportunities for our kids while they're working on their high school transcript, but that we're also getting them ready for college and/or workforce and what that may look like. And just, you know, to give you an idea, you know, we have some incredible opportunities in our backyard with Relus Campus and other things such as that. And so, again, just exploring those partnerships and what that may look like in the future for College View High School and for our kids. And then community-connected campus with local businesses. You know, I would love to have what I call real-world classrooms, to where we're connecting with local businesses, and local businesses are providing problems to our kids, and our kids are working on those problems in our classrooms. And the solutions that our kids come up with go back to those businesses, and then the businesses are providing feedback to our kids on their solutions. While, I mean, while we're working on our curriculum, we're also working on real-world problems. And then everything that goes with the feedback, and then building the portfolio, the digital portfolio of the work that you're doing in high school and how it's making you even more marketable and employable, because you're currently working on real-world problems and coming up with real-world solutions. Challenges, you know, with anything that's brand-new, the growing pains that go with that. You know, I've already talked about some of those. As our enrollment increases, you know, we've got to be even more creative and flexible with our master schedule, with the number of staff that we have. That, you know, possibly include growing the staff, and, you know, the growing pains that ripple effect from that in terms of increasing staffing and what that may look like as we support our kids and the needs of our kids. Marketing, you know, one thing that I have found and continue to find, and take this responsibility squarely on my shoulders, is marketing who we are, what we are. Every chance I get, I talk to kids, families, community members about College View High School and connecting them to who we are. And I would say it was, it's been a rare occasion that I have met somebody that said, oh, yeah, I know about College View, and they can tell me with accuracy what we are and how we serve our families. And so continuing to market who we are and how we serve our kids and how we serve our community and the opportunities that exist at College View. And 99% of the people that I have visited with have all walked away, oh, my gosh, I didn't even know that. I'm so glad I heard that. Thank you so much. And just continuing to market College View High School. And then staffing flexibility, you know, we ask our teachers to do a lot, we ask them to be flexible. And so I'm very mindful of making sure that we do not ever get our teachers to a point where they become ineffective because they're just worn out. And so being mindful of being flexible with our staff and making sure we don't burden them, because stacking classes, multiple preps, things such as that, once again, tying back into our growing pains as we increase. What are our needs? Continued support, you know, I feel very supported by the board, by the community. Just ask for continued support. Our local businesses, you know, strengthening and connecting partnerships with local entities so that we can find unique and progressive ways that College View High School can serve our families and serve our kids, maybe in unique ways that aren't currently being done, or maybe that are unique just to us. And then staffing, you know, as our enrollment increases, so do our student needs. I mean, you've heard that theme predominantly, as you've had the budget talks recently and the number of staffing requests. That's no different at College View. Even though we're small, we still have the same needs in terms of our students. And so those are just the main needs that I see currently. And again, I appreciate the time and the opportunity to talk about us. And now time to answer any questions, if you have them.
Great. Thank you very much for that report.
Yes, sir.
It's exciting to see. I didn't, don't know that I knew all that, that you're doing. In fact, I'm pretty sure I didn't.
Okay.
So thank you again for that. Questions, comments?
Just a quick comment or two. I know I was, most of us went to Northwest and saw their school of choice a year or so ago, two years ago, maybe, two years. And I know we left very impressed and knowing the possibilities that College View had. And I'm just so glad that we're well on our way. I mean, it's incredible. And just finally, I'm so glad you're back.
Glad to be home. Thank you.
I would also like to comment what Mike Nugent said. When we went to that school, I mean, it was amazing. We were excited. And I think we have achieved what we all went there that day for, to try to bring back to College Station. I mean, you're doing an excellent job. I think the, your excitement, I mean, it's contagious and job well done.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to, Justin, I know I visited with you a few months ago and truly blown away. I thought I knew what College View was and all about, but to see some of your vision and practice was truly amazing. I would encourage all of you to go take a visit, because Justin gives an amazing tour, even if you tell him 30 minutes, you're going to be there a while. And that's okay, because you are, it's very exciting. I'll tell you from a practitioner standpoint, of those that are hiring in the workforce across the country, some of the things that I saw in College View were really amazing. It's things that we are doing in the corporate world, real-life problem-solving, having the autonomy, the workshops. What you're bringing is truly going to prepare these students if they go the career and technical route, if they're going to the college readiness route. I was just truly, truly impressed. So thank you again. I echo the enthusiasm, you are, it's contagious. One thing I also thought was really interesting this year, the marketing piece, right? So to increase the enrollment, one of the things that Justin shared with me during our visit was the focus on really getting the word out to the middle schools and intentionally working with the counselors and administrators at our middle schools to understand who might be a fit, who could be a student that could do really well here. And I thought that was, again, the word intentional. That was really, really, really smart. And I'm glad to see, because that's, you know, a lot of times, parents don't know. Parents, students, you know, even our, you know, our administrators. So just wanted to call that out, that I thought that that was, that's an amazing way to address that challenge of not only the marketing, but, you know, having those growing pains with the increased enrollment. So thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know, I think...
You know, I love...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You're good.
I love, okay. I love these reports, because we get to learn about, even more about things that, you know, we don't, we don't know as much about. And, you know, I always harp on this, and I wrote it down right before you said it, Mr. Grimes, that, you know, you're educating the whole child. And I love that you and that CSISD put this as a priority. And then also, you know, when I'm listening to you, I realize that you're meeting these students where they are, and then you're helping and pushing them to fulfill their potential. And then also, you know, from our work on community-based accountability, you and I got to have a lot of discussions about providing those real-world situations for our students in our district. And it sounds to me like you are absolutely doing this with different opportunities and even with the flexible schedules. And then I also love that you talked about the learner profile and having the students take ownership of that learner profile. I think that is extremely important. And I love that you're doing this with the students there. So thank you. Sounds like you're doing a great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
The slides were great, by the way, Ms. Nolan.
Yes, I know.
All right, you know, I would just say, we, I think we'd heard a lot about what the vision for this school was supposed to be. And it's hard when you're, you know, Clark's kind of telling us, and we hear it, and I don't think any of us really got it until we visited Northwestern. And I remember walking through that high school thinking, man, if we could get remotely close to this place over the next seven to eight years, then we would really have something special. And I'll tell you, here we are two years later, and I am dumbfounded by what you guys are bringing to the table in such a short period of time. And, you know, you do, you did a great job tonight of highlighting, you know, what I really thought made Northwestern special, A, was having the right kids there, but B, and perhaps even more importantly, was having the right faculty there. And having teachers who were willing to be flexible in ways that not all teachers are, and to broaden out and get excited with their kids and be excited to host things that maybe they're trying for the very first time as well. And it certainly seems like, I'm sure, as you highlighted, there's still some things to work on. But really, really, a tremendous job in a really short period of time. And, you know, I think it's probably all of our hope, that, man, I would love to see 200 kids in there thriving, doing the kinds of things that you're bringing to the table and thriving in ways that they would not have been able to thrive in our other two comprehensive high schools. And just really need opportunity. So thank you very much for everything you're doing. And please pass along to your staff that we thank them as well for everything they're bringing to the table.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Takes us to I-1. Consider approval of new administrator contracts as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We do have, I do have two recommendations for you for administrative positions this evening. So with Stormy Hickman moving over to the central office to work in the Human Resources Department, we have a very important position as principal of Spring Creek Elementary to fill. Stormy obviously opened the school in 2015 and has set a great foundation, and we've been looking for the right person to come along and build upon that foundation. And we have found her, and her name is Laura Casper Teague. Laura's here, and Laura, would you stand up and wave to everybody? There you go, there's Laura. Laura comes to us from Clear Creek ISD, where she spent the last four years as an assistant principal and instructional supervisor at McWhorter Elementary. Prior to that, she was a district-level resource and inclusion specialist for Clear Creek. Before that, she was a special education teacher and department head back at McWhorter. Laura's a Michigan native who has a different career path. She started in education, or before she started in education, she had a 10-year career as a quality assurance manager and a supply quality engineer. So I'm sure she can look at a lot of our systems and help us with that. So I would like to welcome and recommend Laura Casper Teague. So I would like to welcome and recommend Laura Casper Teague to be principal of Spring Creek Elementary. Second person I would like to recommend this evening is Jackie Hahn. Jackie, would you stand, please, and wave to everybody? Jackie would be the assistant director of special services. Jackie began her career as an elementary teacher X years ago, three years at Andrew, you're welcome, Jackie. Three years at Anderson Shire, she was three years at Bryan ISD, and then she came to College Station, actually, in 2006. She taught at South Knoll, Creekview, and at Oakwood. She became an educational diagnostician back in March of 2015. She has helped us out this year, filling in to help coordinate Section 504 and dyslexia services for College Station ISD. So it would be my recommendation to hire Jackie Hahn as assistant director of special services. So I would hope that the board would act on the recommendations of these two quality leaders to assume these roles in College Station ISD. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would move that we approve these two new administrator contracts as presented.
I'll second.
I'll let you pick which one. Okay, we have a motion and...
Second by Ms. Nolan.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. So congratulations, welcome to CSISD, and congratulations. We're excited to see what you all can do.
Jackie's son and husband Doug are here. I'd love for Doug to stand, so I'd like to embarrass him, just so we can welcome there. Thank you all for being here and supporting your wife. There we go, all right.
Great. Okay, item I-2, consideration discussion and possible action related to employee salaries and health insurance benefits for the 2019-20 school year. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We talked about this at 5:00. We spent about 45 minutes talking about the 2019-20 budget, and a significant portion of that is our compensation. So these next two agenda items address that. Spoke a little bit about it in my comments at the beginning of this meeting, too, about the tremendous amount of investment that we are making in our faculty and staff in College Station ISD. And so to actualize that, we have I-2 and I-3 for your approval. With more information on I-2, on the salaries and health insurance benefits for 2019-2020, is Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, and board members as part of our 1920 planning budget. As Dr. Ely mentioned, we discussed this in quite a bit of detail earlier this evening at our workshop. The administration is recommending the following raises be applied for the 1920 school year. For teachers or those being paid on the teacher's salary schedule, we're recommending raises dependent upon the step of 3.6% off the teacher's schedule midpoint, which equates to $1,800, ranging to a high of 5.6% or $2,800 off the teacher midpoint. For raises and compensations to implement, the teacher raises, we're looking at an investment of around $2.5 million collectively. For all other employees, we're looking at spending an additional $1.3 million. Those would be paraprofessional raises, 4% off their respective pay grade midpoint. For auxiliary personnel, 4% off their pay grade midpoint. For those on a one-year administrative contract, 3% off their respective midpoint or pay grade midpoint. And for all two-year contract administrators, 2% off of their respective pay grade midpoint. In addition to those increases in salary, we're also proposing the district increases contribution to the TRS Active Care 1 High Deductible Employee Only Plan by $11 per month per participating employee, and maintain all other plan contribution levels. This will ensure that there's at least one health insurance plan with no monthly premium available to all employees. Again, all told, these increases, along with the insurance contribution, will run in the ballpark of approximately $3.8 million in increased compensation for our current employees. So it is administration's recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you. Thank you for not going through the entire 45-minute presentation again. Any questions, comments?
You know, I think I would just say, this, and we had a full discussion about this earlier, but I appreciate the fact that we are really, at least in my opinion, it's rare that I agree what our legislators have done in terms of education funding, but they really did a good job with HB3 in terms of moving us in the right direction. And I appreciate the administration's efforts to honor the spirit of what those legislators passed, in that we are probably, as we stated, low to mid on the range of actual money that we're getting to hold on to, but I think we're really going above and beyond in terms of what was intended, which was returning a really large share of this money, and for our purposes, certainly up near 75%, going towards salaries of people who are actually doing the work in our district. And I think you guys are to be commended for coming back with this and putting it in a good perspective. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Very much.
I will make the motion that we approve as presented, as long as I don't have to read that whole thing over again.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. That takes us to I-3. Consider approval of the annual compensation plan for the 2019-20 school year. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. With, actually, I-2 leads into I-3, where we'll actualize that and approve the overall compensation plan with salary schedules for teachers, administrative professionals, clerical paraprofessionals, auxiliary stipends and everything that goes into a compensation plan. With more information on that, is Mr. Martindale.
The attached compensation plans reflect the investment we just made with employee raises. Again, $2.5 million to implement the attached teacher schedule, and the additional $1.3 million for all other employees. These 19-20 compensation plans, again, reflect the raises we were just passing along to our employees. So it is administration's recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you again. Any other questions, comments?
I move that we approve the compensation plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, that's, happy to do it. Okay, that takes us to J-1. Consider approval of an interlocal agreement with Brazos County, Texas concerning use by Brazos County of the district's fuel pumping facility. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We operate with a number of different entities in our local community, one of those being Brazos County and their work that they do to provide school resource deputies for us. We've been working with them for the last couple of years now. We do look for opportunities to provide partnerships that benefit the entire community, and we have one of those for you here for your consideration this evening. Our Brazos folks in Precinct 1 and Precinct 3, which is the southern part of Brazos County, those school resource, those sheriff's deputies and those who operate vehicles in Precinct 1 and Precinct 3 have to go and get their vehicles refilled all the way in the northern part of Brazos County. That takes them out of action when they have to go refill their vehicles, sometimes up to an hour. We have a facility in the southern part of our school district at the transportation center, and so what we have for you this evening is an interlocal agreement to partner with Brazos County and allow them to use our fuel refueling station at the transportation center. We believe that would bring a great value to the entire Brazos County. So with any more information on that, is Mr. Martindale.
You said it perfectly, Dr. Ely. Those folks would be provided access to transportation, and the key fobs will be assigned to each of their vehicles, so that we can monitor their consumption, and we bill Brazos County on a monthly basis. And as Dr. Ely mentioned, it prevents those folks from having to travel so far north to refuel. That's costing taxpayers that extra travel time, in addition to the fact that it takes them out of duty during that time as well. So this is an excellent opportunity for us to partner with the county for the betterment of the collective, for all the taxpayers in Brazos County. So we'd recommend approval of the resolution supporting interlocal fuel agreement with Brazos County.
Great, thank you. I have a question and a comment. I guess the question is, has our legal counsel reviewed the agreement?
Yes, he has.
Okay. And then the comment is, I can't tell you how proud I am to be a part of this as a board member, but also as a citizen, that we're able, as two governing entities, to work together in a way that achieves efficiency for taxpayer funds. So kudos to you all, and also to Brazos County for making this happen. With that, other questions, comments?
Fair warning to those living in Pebble Creek that watch your speeding on highway on Fitch as we move forward.
Okay, can I move that we approve? Oh, go ahead.
No, you got it. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with Brazos County.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to J-2. Consider approval of purchase of measure of academic progress online resources from the Northwest Evaluation Association. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. This board, for those in the community who maybe haven't been around here very long, this board has traditionally taken a big leadership role in understanding the pitfalls of our state mandated assessment, the STAR test, and understand that it does not do a good job of reflecting what goes on in a classroom on a day-to-day basis. The fact that it's given to students once a year at the end of instruction, we don't get information until the summer, and it's hard to take action on that for next year, is only some of the confounding issues that we have with our state mandated assessments. We have been undergoing, in this district for a number of years, a different type of accountability system based, we call our community-based accountability, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but if STAR is not the answer to what we are looking for as far as a good measure of measuring the progress of our students, the question we asked ourselves is, what would be a better alternative? We have done some research over the past several years, talked to other districts around the nation, around the state, who are looking for something else to be able to provide actionable data for their students. And the culmination of that work is here this evening with our recommendation for the purchase of the MAP test, or the measure of academic process, progress, excuse me. This is a test that's given three times a year, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and the end of the year. It is, it uses, it's a way for us to monitor progress and track kids throughout the school year, and know how they're doing, and not just when they show up at the end of the year on a STAR test. Unlike the STAR, this is given all across the nation, and it does allow us the opportunity, should we choose to, to see how our kids prepare, compare, excuse me, with students who take this test all across the nation. So nationally, norm comparisons in a district with a major tier-one research university would probably be beneficial to folks in our school district, and would bring value to us as well. And even more than that, it'll help us with some of the things that we want to do to measure student progress and student growth through our community-based accountability system. For that, and a number of reasons, we are coming to you with a recommendation to purchase the MAP test that we would, that we would purchase now and would be putting into place for next school year. So with more information on that, is Dr. Penny Trammell, our chief academic officer. So, Dr. T.
Thank you. We are coming to you with this recommendation. Just so you know, it does include oral reading proficiency, or what we call reading fluency, for grades kindergarten through three. It contains the MAP Growth Report, which is for students kindergarten through eighth grade, and we're excited about that report, because that report will help us know, from our learners who need a little more time learning, to our learners who are fast learners and excel, it will help us to ensure the entire spectrum of ability groups are learning across our district. In addition, we are including science, grades three through eight, as another measure to make sure our kids are learning in that area, since that is a critical area as far as careers and choices for students. We want to be sure that we're getting some good quality feedback on how our kids are doing there. As Dr. Ely said, in comparison to the nation, one of the things that was previously asked was, can we get a comparison with our kids in College Station with other kids across the state of Texas, teaching the curriculum that the state says we have to teach our kids? And the answer to that is yes. There are over 400 districts across the state of Texas using this instrument, and so we will be able to get reports of how our students are doing in relation to other students experiencing the Texas essential knowledge and skills, in addition to that national report on how are we doing compared to people or compared to students who are experiencing curriculum for different states. So that is one of the big benefits of this assessment. Another big benefit is, our parents get those reports. And as a parent, I know I personally would be interested in, how does my child stack up not only against kids in Texas, but against, you know, kids nationally in our country? In addition, we have to consider the opportunity cost. This is kind of a pricey item, and we know that, lots of research has gone into it, but when we factor in the opportunity cost of the time that teachers take to administer these assessments individually and one-on-one, this is a software solution. I have to say that we have several principals who have been very diligent in helping us with the research. They have attended sessions in other districts, presentations on this instrument. There was a group, K-8 principals were invited to a session that we had here in our district. We had principals volunteer to take tests across all these areas that we're recommending for purchase. I personally volunteered for reading fluency, as did several others. I've already taken my test.
How'd you do?
Well, it didn't take me long. I started out with picture clues for answers as I read and answered questions. I quickly graduated to all words, I'll have you know, and no pictures in my passage, but as I missed some, it dropped me back down to pictures. And so I actually was able to see the adjustments, and it was so cool to experience that. We have another testing session going tomorrow, and many of our administrators will be participating... in tests across different content areas, so we'll get their feedback on that as well because we want to know what it feels like for a student. So that was one of the things they agreed as part of us just exploring this for kids to let us do. So it's pretty exciting that it adjusts. The longer, the first administration would be the longest one because it literally adjusts. So the more you get right, the longer it goes, and the fewer you get right, you know, it adjusts for where you are. The cool thing for teachers is, the feedback is instant, the reports are instant, the grouping is instant. It's really awesome. They also help with implementation recommendations and pacing and that kind of thing. So with that, I don't know if you have any other questions. I'm happy to answer for you, but we do come to you tonight with the recommendation that we purchased, that we purchased MAP for our district.
Great, thank you very much. I can't help but think how this ties into our earlier discussion about the usefulness of relevant and timely information. It's almost real-time feedback about where a student may be, and that's worth a lot. Other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
And a comment. First of all, great presentation because you answered all of my questions that I had as far as vetting and that type of thing, but one question I did, you said that it provides real-time feedback. Is it, what type of feedback? Is it actionable feedback that...
Absolutely.
That teachers know where to direct.
Absolutely. So for instance, in fluency, it measures reading fluency and comprehension. So if I, like, I got dropped back down to the picture level, if I had struggled even with the picture level, it would, on my report, it would have dropped me down to the phonics level, like sounding out words. So it goes all the way down to emergent reading skills. So as a kindergarten teacher, that's very beneficial to me, and when we talk about opportunity cost, teachers spend weeks testing kids.
Trying to figure it out.
So imagine that time, you know, we're talking about kind of a pricey item, but imagine that time being able to be spent with kids, teaching them, because the data is there instantly, as soon as the test is finished. So that's, it adjusts, and the reports are skill-specific. There is an element of progress monitoring as well. If we, if the board chooses to indeed purchase this, the recommendation is that we not implement that right away. It's a gradual phase-in because we want all of our stakeholders to be comfortable and our kids to be comfortable, but it would help even with progress monitoring. We spend hours and hours staffing kids. This would assist teachers in that progress monitoring with the click of a button. It actually has built-in progress monitoring tools, so it's a really exciting tool for our district, and as I said, the opportunity costs are wonderful as far as recaptured instructional time.
Thank you.
I want to say I'm proud.
I remember sitting at the state convention, I think it was, in the fall, in one of the workshops, and hearing other school districts talk about, other school districts involved with community-based accountability just throw out this word, this MAP, MAP this, MAP that, and I remember asking, I think I asked you or Molly what that was, because I was like, wait, what is this that they're all using, and they're all talking about what a great tool it is? And you explained it and said that y'all were looking into it. So I'm happy to hear that you did all of this research and that it sounds like it's going to be beneficial for us. And also, as a parent, I think I would much prefer this being given, like, at the beginning of the year, rather than like an old STAR test, you know, to see where, because I know some of my kiddos have done that in the past. So it sounds like this would be much more informative for the teachers and give them a better starting point.
We feel it will.
Thanks again to the European contingent of the board tonight, but, you know, I'm proud to be a part of a district that's doing something like this, to be honest, and, you know, for everything that the STAR does, there's an enormous amount that it does poorly, and part of that is not giving us actionable feedback in a timely manner, and doing things like, you know, having us test our third graders at a sixth-grade reading level and then telling them that they're all failing. And I think that, you know, it's been since the very day I got on this board, I think that we, and well before that, have not been great big proponents of STAR testing and teaching to the test, and what we actually get out of that from a test that's designed to fail a certain number of school districts and kids, regardless of how well they do on an absolute level. So I'm excited we're moving in this direction. So kudos to everybody that did all the research and found the thing that's going to work best for us.
Thank you. Team effort. With that, we would like to make, if there are no further questions, the recommendation for the purpose, for the purchase of MAP for CSISD tonight. I make a motion that we approve as presented to purchase MAP for CSISD. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Delay is great. All opposed? None opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. L-1? That takes us to L-1, 2, and 3, where the board will retire to executive session, and I will read these off now. The board will meet in executive session to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property because the deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with a third party. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberation regarding real property closed meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.0742 of the Texas Government Code. L-2, the board will meet in executive session to discuss 2019 school safety audit. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberations regarding security devices or security audits, closed meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. And L-3, the board will meet in executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters Closed Meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. So we're going to retire to executive session for those three items, and we will return to open session if there is any action to be taken. But we don't think there will be.